...to the flag of the United States and the Capitol. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wolf Hall. Hudson?
Here.
Whitmer?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Karen?
Here.
I'm in three to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second motion. Wolf Hall. Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rocco?
Yes.
If it passes, it takes a 34 to pretend. Okay. First thing I wanted to talk to you guys about tonight, I'm gonna jump over to letter B, is a Key Clipper Award. Lance Austin has reading, but I want to recognize one of our staff members that did some pretty incredible stuff, although it's part of the routine of what we do and how we do the things we do at the schools. But Brooke Hitchcock was here with us tonight, and I'll let Lance go ahead and read. I'd love to recognize Brooke for the Key Clipper Award. Brooke's a wonderful coworker. She's a great member for the students at Columbiana. She willingly on daily basis goes above and beyond and can see being working with a variety of students and letting, helping him wherever she can throughout the day. About a month ago, Brooke was in the lunchroom, and I believe you're just passing through.
We weren't even supposed to be in there.
And suddenly, a student came up to one of our lunch monitors and said another student had been choking. Now, the way, I didn't happen to be in the building, the way it was described is Brooke left over multiple tables and...
Yeah. It's not very...
She performed the Heimlich maneuver and saved the choking student. Although it was talking to the school for the rest of the week by the staff, when I talked to Brooke about it, she remained very humble, and she just said, "I was just doing my job." And I'd like to congratulate her for not only saving one of those students' lives, but what she does on a daily basis.
Won't you go speak?
Katie, I haven't heard your call all that, but Mrs. Hitchcock is one of our nurses, and you know, just in the nature of what she does and where she is, she happened to save one of our students' lives by doing the Heimlich maneuver. And you know, I talked to her shortly after that, and she says, "I didn't have to do that before." But you know, just reactive, and this is the type of stuff that we want to make sure we recognize, and I'm sure the Board of Education appreciates absolutely everything you do on a regular basis. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Brooke. So, moving on to some other business items, we'll look at letter A, open enrollment. I happen to be in a class, why I'm here right now, with Dr. Larwin, Karen Larwin from Youngstown State University, statistician, very impressive professor, to be very honest with you, she's very, very impressive. And she did some joint work with Dr. Ibrusie now, and it really has to do with open enrollment. Some of their focus was on Youngstown City, looking at some of the enrollment things that the city is experiencing. And she had data for us, because we've been part of the Mahoning County Educational Service Center, and was able to extract our data and kind of compare it and give us some data and some information, so the icons and the stuff that you see on the screen, not the sorry, I haven't got the correct credit to do, but Mr. Rocco's up, I think raising the bar a little bit, but I can't get any credit. So essentially, their findings were that open enrollment does not have an impact on student achievement when examined countywide. But this countywide version is essentially mostly Mahoning County data. Because of our involvement with the E.S.C., some of our data was extracted, so we're sort of lumped in with that Mahoning County group in this data. They did, John LaPlante was requested of John LaPlante, who's the Director of Access to graph data from Columbiana County, to do more of a rollout of Columbiana County data. So, you'll have to take this into understanding that some of this data is relevant for us, maybe not relevant for the county. Okay, so if you look at these lines right here, the blue line and the yellow orange line are essentially so closely related to consistent data that it really does not show us the statistical impact. So, I'm gonna go through some of the data that they pulled out, but it's really gonna be looking at nitpicking our data a little bit versus what you see here in terms of our open enrollment kids that come here and our native kids that come here. They're very closely tied, so you know, some of what I would think of is that we're doing as good of a job educating open enrollment students as we are students that are native to Columbiana School District as resident students. Okay. Oops, jumped ahead here. This is the bad part about these icons. All right, so for all students that attend Columbiana, the blue are resident students, slightly outperforming as a whole students that are attending from other districts. So, students that come to us, our residential students are actually slightly, when I mean slightly, you can look at, we're talking about 428 to 423 or 4, so it's very close, very close. Here is it by grade level, open enrollment students in orange and resident students in blue. And you can see in some cases how close it is, 430 to 434 in fourth grade, 420 to 424 in third grade, being outperformed slightly by open enrollment students. I think where we make up some of the data is the senior group, along with the sixth grade group, and then slightly outperforming open enrollment students in the seventh and eighth grade. So again, this kind of gives you a look by grade level. So, by subject matter, it's interesting. If you look at reading, they're off, they're dead even. And math, slightly outperformed, couple percentage points. Same thing in science, a big giant gap, I would say, if we're gonna look at any kind of gaps, is residential kids are doing a little bit better in social studies and writing than some of our open enrollment kids. And for all students that attend, you can kind of get an idea of our students that are resident here and then our students who leave. This is probably the biggest significance in all of the data that I've seen that they presented to me, is that students that leave our district, when they get tested, are testing slightly lower, slightly significantly lower. In this case, this is slightly outperform students who leave the district.
When they leave our district after graduation, or when they leave our district in the middle?
No, while they're in the tested grade levels. So, to me, this bodes pretty well for us to say those who attend Columbiana outperform the residential students that leave Columbiana. You know, this kind of data is something that if I'm the principal, I would hang my hat on with my staff, so when they leave us, they're not doing as well as when they stayed with us. So, that's good information for us, maybe not too much good information for open enrollment data for people that take students, and you know, it's all relative. So, students are attending to open enrollment compared to the district from which students are exiting in blue, when looking only at district with the highest level of exit preparation. So, this is their statistics here. Again, slightly, there's some slight numbers here, there's no giant numbers here, they look a little bit bigger based on the graph, if you look at 395 versus 407, they're not a big, big piece of information there. So, you know, we're always trying to examine our data, and we're always looking at what we need to improve. This is just another thing for us to really look at when we start looking at open enrollment students. I know that sometimes I'm posed with questions about our data being driven down by open enrollment students attending Columbiana schools. We do get some students from Youngstown City. Statistically speaking, there isn't a giant difference, they're not pulling our data down based on this. And if I spin this a different way, I would say that our staff is doing a better job of educating those students to keep them with our residential students.
Yep.
If you look at the stats, I interpret that as...
Which one, Tony?
Your first chart, where it shows all the different age groups. It's not that we're homegrown brilliant students, or that we are taking in brilliant students, we are educating them well, and it doesn't matter whether they're resident or non-resident, they're performing well. When the last stat often shows if you leave here, you're not getting the same education, you're not performing as well, which is a tribute to the staff and the schools.
So, I mean, I'm fairly proud of this, I would say. I mean, I know that it's not statistically, you know, different in that matter, but if I look at where we are, you know, we, I can almost sit here and tell you that I don't know which students are open enrollment students unless I know who they are, and then I've had conversations with them and/or their parents. You walk through our hallway, you don't know an open enrollment student from a student who's a residential student. You know, a lot of times, I'll ask Mrs. Sharshay, I say, "Is this student a residential student?" 'cause it might have a bearing on whether they get transported by us or whatnot, or whether they're open enrollment. And she has to look it up, she has no idea. So, you know, the one thing I think we pride ourselves on from administrative standpoint is, we, these are our students, we don't care where they come from. You know, they're ours, and we want to do our very best every day to make sure they have the best opportunities and the most equal opportunities available to them. And I think that that's where we sort of look at when we're, from an administrative standpoint. You know, my children attend here, open enrollment, you know, and I believe they get the same attention from our staff than any other student does that would come to our district. So, I'm pretty proud of the statistics that are pretty equal in this case for us. Any questions? I know, I've had class with Dr. Larwin, so I'm actually interested to see what kind of statistics they come up countywide for Columbiana County, 'cause originally when I, when she gave me this document, it said Columbiana County, I was like, "Okay, this countywide stats, or are these Columbiana schools?" And she said, "No, Columbiana schools," and she sent me a new graph for you guys to look at. So, that's where that's taken.
Do we have any stats that show students that, I'll say that they come into the district and are tested within a short period of time, and how they perform?
Um...
In other words, they've argued that the education...
Yeah, we have our teachers have an affective, their performance. I guess you could go back and pull individual students, we have not done that, so no, we don't have those statistics. Could we assess that? We could. You would have to go back and say, "Okay, this student came to us in fourth grade, let's look at their progression as compared to the rest of the kids in the class over a period of time." I guess you could do those kinds of things, I think, I don't know how easy it would be. How about at the end of this class, I mean, I'd tell you how easy it would be, 'cause there might be a task I'm sitting with, there might be something that Dr. Larwin can't pull from my info when we look at open enrollment students based on how long they've been to the district or certain longevity. So, if that data is available, it just needs, has to be extracted in that way. Any other questions on the open enrollment info? So, let's move to Clipper administration. Really, I put this on here, and Lori Posey is not here, but you'll see, and obviously all of you are aware from the agenda, that Lori is retired and is not returning for next school year. I think that, you know, I'd just like to go and remember to thank her for the work that she's done, not only from the six years that I've been with this school district, but the 20-plus years I think she's spent here, making sure, doing crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, that we're financially stable. I think she's been a tremendous asset for me to grow into an administrative position here in this district. I can't tell you how many times I've gone to Lori and said, "Hey, give me the history on this," or "Give me the history on that," and she's been able to go back and say, "Well, this is why we've came to these conclusions about how we do what we do here in Columbiana." And that history is something that's gonna be very difficult to replace. And along with a lot of the history of staff members when they retire and leave us from the district, and their background and what they've gone through, and the growing pains of being here for anywhere from 20 to 35-plus years, they're invaluable, and Lori has been absolutely invaluable to Columbiana schools. So, you know, I wanted to just kind of make that statement. CCEMA, CCEMA is the Columbiana County Emergency Management Agency. I did not put an agenda item on, I consigned a document they sent out, a memorandum of understanding, that essentially aligns us with an emergency. So, if this county or this area would have a significant problem, that we might be requesting to dismiss students and staff early, provide shelter for evacuees from an infected area, we might have to cancel extracurricular activities, cancel a normal school day, use the school grounds and/or vehicles to include our transportation. And I just think that as part of a public entity in our community, that we be available in a state of emergency. And I'll only give you an example, when I was in Lisbon School, we did have some serious flooding that took place, and their gymnasiums were used as an evacuation place. And the district stepped up to aid its members of the community, and I think that it was absolutely amazing the things that went on and took place from this Emergency Management Council, this agency, and the school district. And I just think that unless there's any objections, I wouldn't think that there would be, and that's why this isn't really an agenda item, and I can't sign for this, that we would step up and do our part for the community. So, just wanted to open that up for any discussion if necessary.
No, I think that's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Yep. Okay. That's it for my report.
Thank you. We have another nutrition report. I have another six, principal reports.
Johnson Eviction Principal's report is in board chair, under curriculum and professional development. The Mahoning County E.S.C.'s second round of content area professional development started this week. Teachers can go in the evening from 4:00 to 6:30 for their content area. Mrs. Grohacker left this evening for three days, she'll be at Ohio State University for letter C collaborative training, and she'll travel to several schools and participate in watching them put those strategies to use. I'll be attending next week the federal program title conference, and there's a roster verification linkage training on April 1st, we actually were just communicating about that to see who might be attending that. Under student achievement, the Columbiana County art show was held on March 5th, and the Dixon kids that were there, Haley Tilton got an honorable mention, and participants in that show were Madden Deal, Kendra Vogelberger, Thomas Huber, and Allison Smith. The regional DI competition was Saturday, and we had two groups from Dixon, our third and fourth grade team, it was called a fairy tales team, where they had to create a fairy tale where the character had to overcome a fear. Our team managers were Karen and Mike Clark and Kristy Evans, and the team members were Becca Clark, Abby Passmore, Megan Gil, Bryce Evans, Owen Joyce, and Nick Gallo. They placed third in their challenge, but this is their first year as a competitive team, and it was funny, they did a nice job. The fourth grade, the improv game, competed in the improv challenge, they had to prepare three separate skits, they had one minute to prepare it. The judge came in, out, got the piece of paper, the kids were waiting up front, and he read, "You're setting as a diamond mine. Your problem is five-year-olds are driving. You're setting..." you know, and they had one minute as a team to prepare for it, and then two minutes to present it, and they had to do three of those. They did get first place, and they will be moving on to the state on April 11th, and that group did an outstanding job, too. Write to Read Week is coming up, our reading goal is 1,000 hours, our theme is racing, and the kids will get to pick the teachers in the end of the week if they get 1,000 reading hours that will be racing. Jump for Heart this year raised $8,500 for the American Heart Association. I would like to thank Courtney Schiffauer and Kathy Kegy-Smith for all of their help with that. PTO family nights are coming along, once a month, we have a family night at Dixon. This, on the 20th, is called Minute to Win It, and it'll be our family night. I'd like to thank PTO, I'd like to thank Mandy Moore for completing Inner Mirals this year, again Kathy Kegy and Courtney Schiffauer for Jump for Heart, and Courtney Schiffauer, Katie Adams, Mandy Moore, Kathy Kazowski, and Jen Sloan for planning Write to Read Week. There's a testing update there for you, and I also put upcoming dates and, as well as my March newsletter into the board chair. And that's my report. Thank you.
Southside Middle School Good News Report for Clipper Sports. Clipper basketball teams wrapped up their seasons in ITCL tournament play. Our eighth-grade boys lost their first game in the Springfield Tournament. Seventh-grade boys overfinished second place in their upper-tier tournament, which is held at Lisbon, and they lost to an undefeated South Range team, so they brought home the second-place trophy. Both of our girls' teams brought home the gold, they both had convincing wins in the championship games held at Southern Local. Eighth-grade girls not only won their championship, but they were undefeated this year. So, congratulations to all the teams. Spring sports have initiated their practices, with both girls and boys practicing, practicing for their upcoming seasons. Parent-teacher conferences were held on February 11th, and we had approximately 120 conferences that night, so we had pretty good turnout for our second round of conferences. Student Council sponsored a dance for all 6th to 8th grade students on February 12th in the cafeteria, and it's very well-attended, all the students had a really good time that were there. Park and Air state testing, we started on February 17th, and we finished today. We have a few makeup tests, and we're done with this round of testing, and we will resume on April 27th on our final round of testing. Science Fair this year, Richard Yulam was a winner of this year's Science Fair, which was held on February 28th, and Bridget Zaba was the runner-up this year. We also had students involved in the DI regional competition this past weekend, with the following results, our fifth grade, we had a fairy tales team as well, and their team manager was Sean Zentner, team members were Max Kametz, Camille Zentner, Emily Huber, Emily Blosser, Ava Halas, Ellen Nichols, and Dylan Fletcher, and they got a second place. Our sixth and eighth grade, the improv team competed in the improv challenge, they had to prepare three separate skits in one minute, the plan, two minutes performed, such as the Dixon. And team managers Sandy Hill, Georgia Smith, and Stephanie Baylor, Hannah Newton, Harmony Offenberg, Tessa Steingut, Taylor Gooch, Hudson Hartley, and they got first place, and they will move on to state DI competition April the 11th. And our eighth grade lose-to-win, lose-to-win team competition in the structure challenge, they had to create a structure that would hold the weight of a crusher board and be sturdy enough to remove parts of it while still holding the crusher board. Team manager was Debbie Yulam, team members were Richard Yulam, Darius Sujenovic, Chris Squier, Delaney Brunell, Mary Nyers, and Imogen Whitehouse, and they also got first place in the region and will compete in state DI on April the 11th. Important dates to remember, March 11th, coming up here is the Spelling Bee in Lisbon at David Anderson High School, 6:30. We'll be doing our American Heart Association heartathon activity in the Southside Middle School gym on March 26th. April 10th will be NJHS induction ceremony at 1 o'clock in the high school auditorium. And as we've mentioned before, April 11th, the Southside Middle School DI will be going to Columbus for state competition. And that's the Southside Middle School Good News Report.
The high school report is also located in board chair. Under professional development, I had the opportunity to go with Mr. Martin and a few teachers to the tech conference, it was a great learning experience for all of us, always looking for new ways to integrate new technology into the curriculum, and this gave us some great ideas going forward. Lots of activities. I want to say, first of all, congratulations to our four-way speech competitors. Earning first place was Aaron Willoughby, followed by Doty Elness, Michael Vargo, and Adler Maye. Big weekend this past weekend in speech. Of the 25 students on our speech team, 18 were state qualifiers this year. The following students made the to-the-quarterfinal round, that's the top 24, that included David White, Adam Kyle, Cheyenne Carr, Cortland Stone, Doty Elness, Sarah Hunter, and Aaron Willoughby. Michael Vargo was a semifinalist, he placed in the top 12. Bruce Wiggins was a finalist and placed fifth. Bree Davis and Haley Martin were finalists in duo and placed third, and Brad Keeler and Zach Fringer won...
and Zach Pringer won the state title. And they are now state champions in duo. Team placed ninth overall out of 50 schools, and they had the most number ones, the best score you could receive at the tournament, with 26 total. We also had a team competing in Destination Imagination Tournament. Our improv team placed first and will move on to the state competition in April. That includes Matt Baylor, Drew Mikowski, Paige Herbert, Logan Pascoe, Alyssa Newton, and Alyssa Swank. Moving on to athletics, first of all, as far as cheerleading, I want to say a special thank you to Coach Shershane, who's, as you know, leading us. She made a special impact. I can tell you personally that we, I have two children on the squad, and I want to thank her for all the time and love that she gave to the squad. Wrestling, we had a good year by Coach Canal. We have five wrestlers advance to the district tournament. Two wrestlers advance to day two of the tournament, and we have one wrestler who is one point away from advancing to the state tournament. Hope he can continue building the program. Swimming, we have three girls who competed in the Ohio High School Athletic Association Tournament. Boys' basketball, we finished with a regular season of 13 and 9 and an overall record of 14 and 10. Girls' basketball, congratulations to them. They finished out their regular season at 18 and 4, and the final overall record of 20 and 5. They were sectional champs and ITCL co-champs. And that concludes our report.
I have a second. And...
Make a motion to consider approving the February 2015 financial report?
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 10.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of the pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules pending verification of all credentials, should be assistant baseball coach Tom Burton.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Roll call? Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number 11.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving retirement resignation of Lori Posey, treasurer, effective August 1st, 2015.
I second it.
Discussion?
I'd like to thank Lori, you know, I think we all would, for everything she's done for the district. You know, I started working with Lori way before I was on the board, way back when I think Joe Rodlorn was superintendent here, and she was not only a capable treasurer, but one of the best, if not the best, in the area. We will sorely miss her starting September 1st, and again, I'd just like to thank her for everything she's done for us.
Roll call? Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 12.
I might to consider approving a two-year contract, July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2017, with Mahoney County Educational Service Center for services for the document provided with this agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call? Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 13.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the Columbiana High School program of studies for 2015-16 as provided with this agenda. Any additional revision, addition, and/or deletion may be approved by the superintendent.
Second motion.
Discussion? Roll call? Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 14.
Make a motion to consider approval of the 2015-16 school year district calendar as provided with this agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call? Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 15.
I'd like to consider approving a resolution to accept students from any Ohio school district to attend classes Columbiana exempted schools under the district's inter-district open enrollment policy, number 5113 for the 2015-16 school year.
I second that.
Discussion? Roll call? Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 16.
I might to consider approving employment of Mark Bush on a supplemental contract for the 14-15 school year as head boys track coach, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call? Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 17.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel on a supplemental contract for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules pending verification of all credentials, Drama Middle School, and Play Director High School, Play, Megan Cowan, Mrs. Hudak, and Margaret Silver.
Second motion.
Discussion? Roll call? Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Motion passes, item 18, President's Report.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I think it's great that our key Clipper award happens to be another staff member, and obviously going above and beyond with her leaping and saving one of our students. I also want to reiterate the comment from our statistics that Don shows that our staff is obviously doing a great job taking residential and non-residential students equally the same and producing great results. Athletically, you know, our teams are doing very well. We have both undefeated and first-place finishes. And academically, our DI and our, I guess academically, our speech team, our speech team has done well for a long time, and I think it's pretty impressive when you think of the number of those students that are doing well at state and competing. Same with our DI team, we seem like we have state teams every go-around. And again, I'd like to thank Kim for your cheerleading, but I just think you've done a great job. One other comment, just that I got a message, I think, yesterday from, in the paper, with our basketball finish on the girls, Don Look's daughter Bailey being named Player of the Year, second go-around, again, speaks highly of what we do off, or outside of the classroom at the school. That's all I have. So it takes me, 19, the OSBA legislatively is on report?
No report.
Item 20, the OSBA Student Achievement Report?
No report.
Item 21, Columbiana County Career Center Board Member Report?
Last month at our board meeting, we heard about the Adult Education Welding Program, heard some numbers as far as students enrolled for next year in the high school, and saw a demonstration of a piece of welding equipment that was cutting something that, of course, I don't quite know what it was, but it was pretty impressive, let me tell you that. That, of course, is out of my area of expertise, but it was pretty neat to see. And I think they're looking at additional improvements somewhere in the building this summer, so we haven't heard exactly too much detail on that yet in my report.
Thank you. Takes item number 22, date of the next board meeting, Tuesday, April 14th, 2015, 6:00 PM, right here in the high school media center. Item 23, consider executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22 for the sole purpose of consideration of any of the following matters: employment, discipline, and compensation.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call? Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Rokko?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, we're in executive session.